All right, want to call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. We have board members present here and we have Mr. Dunn, Ms. Massey coming in remotely. And Ms. Skamurski, we expect to join us a little bit later. She had a work commitment. So with that, if you could please rise and join me with the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all.
Next on our agenda is the student council. Both Katie and Ryan were unable to make it. They didn't let us know that they have a meeting next week and some other activities planned. I think they have a, yeah, of some sort.
Yes.
Yep, fundraiser for apparel. Moving on, we have the public forum. Last week, we switched the board forum and public forum to get information to the community so we could hear about some of the updates. This time, we will stay with the regular scheduled public forum. And as indicated previously in board meetings, if you have something to note for the board, please use the designated email for that and we'll be able to read those. I did want to make a comment too, that we have received several emails from community members, parents about the K-5 instructional delivery plan. As we discussed last week, we appreciate your comments and we hope to hear more from the superintendent after the public forum. So with that, residents, students, employees, and business representatives of the East Greenbush Central School District may address the board on matters concerning programs and/or operations in the district other than matters involving personnel. Members of the board do not directly respond to citizen concerns during the public forum. If a response is appropriate, either the president or superintendent will contact the individual in the near future. Those persons wishing to address the board will be recognized by the chair of the meeting and should state for their record their name and address or affiliation with the district or business. While the board does not wish to infringe upon free speech protections, it must be stressed that the visitor's forum is not deemed to be an open forum. The board president will conduct the forum through orderly and efficient operation of board business. In addition, any remarks which be considered defamatory or stigmatizing or prohibited will be cleared out of order. So with that, we will move to Ms. Waeger, who will monitor the emails.
We do have some emails this evening.
Okay. So just make sure, Barbara Lynda, that we, that the people do recognize who they are, where they're from, and their affiliation with the district, if we can, at least a name.
Sure. Okay, our first email this evening is from Julie Adler. She would like to know if tonight's meeting is going to focus on options for K-5 or will other grades be addressed?
I think at this point, as stated in our agenda, the K-5 instructional grades will be addressed during this meeting.
The next question is from Donald Marble. And his concern is that other schools are handling the full in-person K-5 and we are not. And he notes that there are no major outbreaks in these other districts and he's voicing his concern about that.
We appreciate him voicing those concerns. One of the reasons that we took on this item and issue was because of, we've heard from people in the community and we feel that we can take a look again at the K-5 closer, which we did last week, and the superintendent and his team has done that. And there'll be a report after the public forum on those findings and recommendations.
Great, thank you. The next question is from Ralph Mareska. And he is wondering about, when the daily schedules were sent out, the virtual days were supposed to have the same length as in-person school days. Apparently, he thinks his student is starting at 12:30 in the afternoon with one classroom. And he is concerned that either the parents or guardians are misformed or there has been a change in the schedule. And he overheard a class yesterday. He didn't think there was much control. And he's, do the teachers have the ability to mute students' mics?
So a few things there, Mr. Simons or Ms. McHugh, you want to address those?
Students should not be starting class at 12:30. And I, the question, the answer to the question depends on whether or not the parent is referring to a day when their student is on remote or on a virtual Wednesday. On virtual Wednesday, for example, today, there was a modification to the schedule that the first period starts, I think it's around 9:10, 9:15, maybe a little bit later than that. Is that right, Mr. McHugh?
Yeah, I'd have to look up just to be...
But it was a, it was a time adjustment to ensure that the teachers, because they're teaching in a different manner with technology and teaching different groups of students on different schedules, had appropriate time to plan and to collaborate among teachers that teach the same courses. So that was an agreement and adjustment that was made on virtual Wednesdays. On remote days, depending on the level, there is a different schedule. So at the elementary school level, there are time periods in the schedule where students are expected to be engaged in Google classrooms with teachers. They are not expected to be in those Google classrooms all day long for the entire instructional day. Then there are periods of time where individual students and groups of students meet with teachers, and then there is remote assignments and projects and work that the students need to do at the elementary school level. At the middle school and the high school level on remote days, students are completing remote projects and assignments and, in several cases, are able to participate in the class through virtual live instruction. So even on remote days, the kids can participate in many of the classes. So it would depend on the individual student, the child's schedule, and what I would do is encourage the parent to contact the principal to get more information about that situation.
I think there was one more about the teacher's ability to mute individual students. Was that in?
I believe they can do that. Was that right, Peter?
That's correct. Director of IT is nodding his head yes, the teacher does that ability.
And then final right now is an email from Lori Marchioni. And it is a comment that she has asked me to read to the Board of Education. My name is Lori Marchioni. I am the parent of a 10th, 8th, and 5th grader. I want to express my gratitude for the tremendous amount of work by so many people that has gone into the process of bringing our kids back to school. With a student at each level, I'm incredibly grateful that the district focused on making things equitable across all grade levels. All of the students, regardless of their age, need in-person time with their teachers. I know that the committee worked to maintain the integrity of all academic programs and to continue offering all honors, AP, and elective courses. The hard work put in by so many is reflected in the current plan that gives as much in-person time as possible at all levels while keeping our children and staff as safe as possible. While I understand that many parents wish to have their children, particularly the K-5 kids, in school every day, I appreciate that our district remains committed to the safety and health of our community. The social distancing measures in place now will potentially allow our district to remain in-person should the number of COVID cases rise dramatically. Our students are just beginning to get into the routine of A-B day, and I don't believe they would be well-served by changing that at this point. Bringing students in for every other Wednesday would in fact reduce the amount of contact K-5 students have with their teacher. And bringing half of the one group in to combine with another group will create an absolutely impossible teaching situation for our already overworked teachers. I know that I may represent a smaller group, but teachers are not meant to be babysitters. Teachers are educators. Our East Greenbush teachers are doing an amazing job in an almost impossible scenario. Please give the teachers more time with the current plan before you consider any changes. This plan is working. Our students are safe. They are learning. They are in school.
Very good. Any more, Lynda? Thank you for that.
That's all at this time.
That concludes, okay. Very good. And we appreciate those comments and we'll take those things to heart. So we'll now move to the board forum and superintendent report. I'd like the superintendent first to do the presentation on this update on school reopening and K-5 instructional delivery plan and some of the options.
Thank you, Mr. Bruno. I'm going to ask Mr. Goodwin if he has the slides that we prepared for this evening to make sure that those slides are presented on the screen so members of the public and the board members can see the slides. I'm going to start with some information that's not included in the slides. So Peter, various times I'll ask you to move the slides forward and I would appreciate you doing that. The questions and concerns that we've received from parents over the course of the last few weeks, primarily parents from the kindergarten through 5th grade level, relate to trying to ensure that we are aware of some of the experiences of the students during remote learning days as well as on virtual Wednesdays and asking the district to work to bring back students to in-person learning five days a week. When we weigh that decision, the first factor we have to consider is, are we prepared for responding to a circumstance which may cause our district, because of COVID-19, to have all of our students K through 12, five days a week in either remote learning or virtual instruction? So in accordance with the guidance that New York State developed and gave to the districts in the third week of July, we are to be prepared to operate under any models, in-person, remote, and hybrid. Our plan provides a combination of those three options to our students. The second consideration is what is happening with our district's and other school district's experiences regarding COVID-19. And I want to take just a minute to explain what is going on in our district and in other school districts related to the cases and the contact tracing that is required of the county and the schools to give you a better sense of some of the health and safety concerns that we are monitoring and managing. Right now, the district has done very well from a health and safety standpoint. We've had five students indicate and test positive since really August. There were two of those five students who were positive prior to the school year opening. Their quarantine lasted into the beginning of the school year, so they were reported as two positive cases, even though the district may not have been required to report those at the time. We weren't sure, so we reported those two cases. Additionally, since school opened, there have been three cases, one at the middle school level and one at the elementary school level and two at the high school level, excuse me, two at the high, three at the high school level and one at the, at the middle school level and one student that was on the remote program. So in terms of five cases, that sounds pretty good. We have had no cases of teachers and staff. However, we are reporting a number of children and staff with symptoms who've been referred to a medical care provider or to the county as part of the reporting requirement for the state. One of the pieces of information that we don't have to report, but which we are informed on a weekly basis, sometimes a daily basis, are the number of students that the County Department of Health has included as a contact to somebody who has tested positive or somebody who has traveled to one of the countries and/or states currently on the list of states or areas which require individuals to quarantine when they return to New York State. As of today, we have had 29 students listed as contacts to a positive case. Now those students, when they are considered by the county to be a contact, are immediately placed on quarantine for 14 days and those students are shifted to remote learning. In the case of the elementary school, it is tutoring. In the case of the middle school and the high school, the remote learning is a virtual, virtual live stream into the classroom. Of those 29, there's an additional six students who are on a travel advisory. They can't come to school for 14 days because a parent or a family member traveled to one of those areas that New York State has indicated require quarantine. Our current, current hybrid model presents us with a situation whereby we are limiting the number of children that are in school every day. In part, that is done to manage the requirements for social distancing, the number of seats we can fit in every classroom. It has also turned out to be advantageous because there are situations with our cases that have occurred which have not precipitated us having to close a school. So for example, of the five cases that we've had, we've had situations where the county will call us, they will let us know that a student has tested positive, and when we look at our student attendance, that student has not been in the school for at least 48 hours. When an individual becomes symptomatic, the County Department of Health will look at the individuals that came in contact with that person within the last 48 hours. So they backtrack 48 hours to try to determine the number of contacts. We have been fortunate that we haven't closed schools, we haven't had to close a class, and in part, that is because of the way that we are managing the number of children that come into our school and staff that are in contact with one another each day as part of our hybrid program. It's very important to keep that in mind, that we don't want to wait for a situation whereby we have an outbreak. Now, in my conversations with the county health department, which I have every Wednesday with other superintendents, there is not community spread in Rensselaer County. However, the number of cases in New York and the number of cases across the country in almost every state but two are increasing. And we have been advised that New York State, as Mr. Mann said at the last meeting, now has a program that would immediately target certain areas of communities in the event that there is a COVID issue. As part of that targeting plan, they, if the threshold of cases reaches a certain level, schools have to be prepared to go on what's called a yellow status and close. We are not near that level in Rensselaer County. We hope not to get near to that level in Rensselaer County. But the health and safety considerations associated with making sure that we do what we can, make sure that we don't have students and staff coming into contact with infected people, is an important factor in why we operate under a hybrid. That being said, I think I speak for all of the members of the administration and the board that we are sensitive and concerned about the impact of all of this on learning. I don't know a school district in New York State or across the country that isn't talking about making sure that we can assess the overall impact on what might be happening with our children and their educational progress as a result of this pandemic going back to March of last spring. So we are not insensitive to the impact of the hybrid program on our students and particularly our kindergarten through 5th grade kids who are getting two days of in-person learning and in some cases, doing well, in other cases, struggling. And we are certainly not insensitive to the burden and the impact that that two-day-a-week schedule has on our families. And as I have talked to many parents or emailed with many parents over the course of the last couple of weeks, I have tried to explain that our district is doing what it can to manage the health and safety circumstances of COVID-19, but limited in its options to be able to respond to increasing in-person, in-person learning at the kindergarten through 5th grade level. And the primary limitations are space and staff. As parents have brought to my attention, going back to August, that other districts were able to provide five days of in-person learning, other districts may have different considerations than East Greenbush. East Greenbush is a district that has grown in enrollment and continues to grow in enrollment. Some of the neighboring districts that are referred to have leased out their buildings to other agencies because of the number of vacant classroom spaces they've had over the course of the last several years. Our district readjusted its attendance zones because we were overcrowded at Belltop School and we are projected to have increasing enrollment for the next several years. So we don't have a lot of extra classroom space. Additionally, when we considered the concerns of the parents back in the summer, we looked at every available space that we had in every building, including our art rooms, our music rooms, our libraries, our gymnasiums, our cafeterias. We looked at similar models that will be, being implemented in other districts, and we were willing to go in that direction. We simply couldn't because we don't have the classrooms. And so that's why we decided at the time to go with a hybrid. And we committed to the community that we would continue to look at these issues as we eased into September and see how we were doing. So we've had ongoing discussions within our district administration, with our teachers, with our faculty, and we have, in various times, surveyed our stakeholders. We surveyed our parents at the kindergarten through 5th grade level regarding virtual Wednesdays. We knew that we were having some issues regarding connectivity and student learning on virtual Wednesdays. We surveyed our grade 6 through 12 families regarding virtual Wednesdays as well because we wanted to get a sense of what the experiences are of students in the home. In some cases, we could address those and we have, and Mr. McHugh reported on that at the last meeting. In some cases, there are issues that we work through as a district. We provide additional technology if there's a Wi-Fi issue. In some cases, for example, today, I know some students were experiencing some issues. It could be an issue with spectrum or the provider that is providing internet access in the home. So we've done what we can to make the virtual Wednesdays work better based on surveys. We also have surveyed our four remote students' families recently to try to determine how many families anticipate having their children come back to school for in-person learning and participate in the hybrid come second marking period. We have to permit students to come back if their families make that choice. There is no law indicating or state regulation indicating that we can prohibit families at any point from coming back to participate in our in-person learning. We are going to show you some data regarding that survey. That survey will close by the end of the week, but the numbers continue to go up. There were 65 as of last evening. There were 11 or 12 additional that came in today. So there are families who are intending to have their children come back, and when those children come back, that increases the enrollment in our kindergarten through 5th grade classrooms and creates even bigger challenge to make sure that we can manage the social distancing requirement of having the students in our classrooms six feet apart as well as the procedures. So there are many children who, parents feel that based on the fact that the program is going fairly well from a health and safety standpoint, who want their kids to opt back in to the hybrid model. We are committed to maintaining our compliance with the New York State Department of Health and the New York State Education Department requirements regarding health and safety of students, faculty, staff, and community. And I want to go back just for a minute to some of the conversations that occurred in the spring as we were trying to figure out with our staff and with our parents and with our board how we were going to reopen safely. We had to balance the educational needs of our students, which are primary, with the safety needs of our students, but we also have considerations for safety and health of our faculty and our staff. Many faculty and staff, no different than any family, have family members that have health conditions that make those family members more vulnerable to serious complications from COVID-19. Many of our families of our children have grandparents and other relatives living in the home who also have fears and concerns that their children will be exposed and come back and potentially expose an older relative or a relative with an underlying condition. So as we've moved successfully into reopening, it's important not to forget that the health and safety of everybody, including the health and safety of the community, is an important factor that the school district is responsible for doing its part on. That is, again, why we chose to ease into this in September and into the fall with a plan that only involved two days of in-person learning. Virtual Wednesdays were critically important so that the students and the staff could be prepared in the event that the numbers go up in the state or the numbers go up in the region and we are forced to go full remote. There are many districts, in fact, the majority of the districts in New York State right now are operating on somewhat of a hybrid. And yes, those districts may be operating differently, but the fact is, they are operating a hybrid due to some of the various same concerns that we've had as part of our reopening plan. Importantly, we have also heard from our families, why did we not put our middle school students and our high school students on five days a week of full remote instruction so that our elementary students could come in five days a week and perhaps use the middle school and the high school? First and foremost, we had discussions within our reopening committee and within our board about that very issue. I believe, and I believe many people believe, that the experiences of our elementary students, our middle school students, and our high school students should be equitable. And when I am met with concerns about middle school and high school, I have to say that our experiences of the spring support what we're doing. And even our experiences now support what we're doing. We have concerns about some students who were not connecting to remote learning and virtual learning in the spring. We have students that fell off the radar, so to speak. They weren't connecting with teachers. We've done home visits through our social workers, our administrators, and our counselors. And we are responsible to make sure that regardless of what grade level students are in, that they are engaged in education, and we are responsible to ensure that we are meeting their social emotional needs. And as kids move up from the elementary school level to the middle school level and to the high school level, those social emotional needs change. And particularly for probably three years now, our board and our administration has talked a great deal about and put a lot of systems in place to deal with the mental health issues that our school districts are faced with. Those mental health issues got compounded and magnified by the shutdown during COVID. And in particular, our middle school students and our high school students need the benefit just as much as the elementary students need of connecting with their peers and connecting with their teachers and the benefits of in-person learning. Additionally, as our students progress through the K-12 system, the rigor of the coursework gets more difficult. Students want to take accelerated courses, for example, in the middle school so that they can take other options for courses and electives as they go on to high school. Students need to take, want to take AP courses and college credit courses and courses that are specifically related to electives that they are interested in taking. All of those programs require the delivery of instruction in ways that involve at least, at least two days of in-person learning. So if there's a sense that some of our middle school and high school kids would be just fine by being at home and in remote learning five days a week, it's our experience in the district and the experience of many others that that is not the case. And even under our current hybrid, we are concerned, and the board has been concerned, about student attendance. We have some students that we still don't know whether or not they are enrolled in our school or whether they have enrolled in another district. I think we have about 11 at the high school that we're, we're doing home visits. We're trying to find out where they are. So we tried to balance the academic, social, emotional needs of every child, from the children that were coming into kindergarten at the beginning of this year whose families were markedly disappointed by the fact that we weren't able to provide them with the typical kindergarten experience, to the high school freshman, freshman year being very difficult to transition from middle school into high school. The freshman year is very difficult to provide some level of support for our freshmen who are transitioning in and just starting their high school careers, to the juniors and seniors who want to take rigorous courses and are beginning to think about, and their parents are thinking about where they might want to go after graduation. So every child... So every child's need is important. And our district tried to put in place a plan that would consider those needs equitably across the district and balance the academic and social needs of all of our kids. That doesn't mean that we are not focused on what we can do to improve the situation at the kindergarten through the fifth grade level. As I indicated earlier, based on a survey that closes on the 23rd of October on Friday, right now, this morning's data suggested that 65 children, their families are planning to have them come back and participate in the hybrid. The breakdown of that is changed. There's about 11 more that came in today. But based on this morning's data, seven of those students are in kindergarten, six of those students are in grade one, six students are in grade two. We have one individual who has indicated that if we go from two days in person to three, they will continue on remote for, based on a fear and a concern regarding exposure. Seven students at grade three, one at grade four, and five at grade five. And again, those numbers have changed. Those numbers have to be added to the numbers that we shared with the community last week regarding how we figure out the number of children that we can safely place in every classroom, six feet apart, utilizing every space where we can. However, we are reviewing the options. And one of the important considerations for me as superintendent of the district, and I think for our administrative team, including Mr. McHugh and the principals, is we want to be able to do this in a thoughtful manner that preserves the educational flow that we're currently, we have in place with our kids in a way that is smooth and not disruptive of the current educational model. We met with our kindergarten teachers a couple weeks ago. And the kindergarten teachers and other elementary teachers have indicated to us they're just feeling that the students are getting confident in the plan that is in place. The students, in many cases, are benefiting from the small group instruction that they're receiving on the days that they are there because the student-teacher ratio is much lower. That doesn't discount some of the experiences of the students who are having some struggles with remote or the families. We looked at, we have looking at options that would change the A-week and B-week schedule and potentially put half of our B kids in on A days and half of our A kids in on B days. However, that particular, that has a particular challenge in terms of some of the issues that Mrs. Marshone brought up in her public comment in terms of continuity of instruction. For example, students in the B group would be there with A kids one day and would be with the other B kids next day. It's almost as if you're teaching three groups of students, and it challenges the teachers in terms of differentiating. So if we were to go with a model like that, we really need the input of our teachers to see whether or not that would work in a way that would continue the growth of our kids. We have also had some conversation about starting with kindergarten as a priority grade level and seeing what we could do within our administrative team to offer the kindergarten kids five days a week of in-person instruction. In that case, as we've looked at the data, we think we can do it. But again, we want to do it thoughtfully, and we want to do it in conversations with our teachers. In some schools, there is sufficient space. In other schools, there isn't. Particularly at Belltop and Janay, there are some challenges regarding the number of slots that children would be able to go into in the existing classrooms, in the existing kindergarten classrooms. So in the case of Belltop and Janay, a different model might be required. And that might be the model that involves breaking those sections of kindergarten up into an additional section and staffing that section with a teaching assistant. And we still haven't worked out exactly how that would occur. But we're striving to move in a direction of trying to get our kindergartners in more days. Additional considerations include movement of furniture. It includes designing the space to make sure that the challenges of each building are addressed. Classrooms at Belltop don't necessarily look or aren't necessarily designed in the same shape or have the same capacity as classrooms at Janay, for example, or at Green Meadow, the building we're in right now. Instructional delivery, how would that be impacted? Right? The loss of virtual practice, okay? Maybe for some kids and for some parents, the loss of virtual practice is less of a consideration than the concerns about their children struggling right now with the remote learning and the virtual learning piece. And we understand that. But for others, including our, our district, we want the kids to be prepared in the event that we are forced to go full remote. And that is a possibility. I'm hoping that that doesn't happen, but that is a possibility. And in the last several weeks, if you have followed the remarks of the governor, the governor is cautioning everybody to make sure that we have plans for implementing. If we are a district that is in a zone that is identified as a cluster by the state, we are going to have to test 50% of our students and 50% of our staff. I can tell you locally, there's not a plan to do that yet. But we will have to be monitoring the situation, and we have to be prepared in the event that we do wind up going full remote. There are some districts that are still full remote now in the state and only scheduled to open next week with some level of in-person learning. So loss of virtual practice is an important consideration for the district. It may not weigh as heavily on some of our parents and our kids as the concern about support needed for more in-person learning. We understand that. At grade one, it becomes more challenging because we have less space at grade one. In fact, as we talked about implementing the A-B week schedule change and putting more kids in on A days and B days, it's important to remember that we had six seats available. But now, as we've monitored the number of kids that want to return, there are at least six in that grade level that want to return. So those seats are basically taken. The additional consideration regarding virtual Wednesday that we're not certain everyone understands, but we want people to understand it, is we have talked about eliminating virtual Wednesday at the early elementary school level. However, in eliminating that, that would involve half of the students coming in for in-person instruction for a third day one week, and the other half of the students coming in the following week for in-person instruction. Meaning, the half that isn't coming in for the additional day would have an additional third day of remote instruction every two weeks. So they'd be home another day. And that could cause problems for learning, could cause problems for our parents, and could cause childcare problems. And we just want people to be aware of it. If in the event we go in the direction of reducing or eliminating virtual Wednesday, reducing it at some grade levels or eliminating entirely at the kindergarten through fifth grade level, we want people to understand that, yes, we pick up an additional day for kids in-person learning every two weeks, but we also pick up an additional day of remote learning every two weeks. So the trade-off might not be as advantageous as first considered. Option B and option C, which were presented last week, are very challenging because of the number of seats that are available right now in our classrooms. And we have similar concerns in grade two through five. If you look at item number three under grades two and five, at grade two, and we're looking at this across the district, across the entire district, all five buildings, we're 19 seats short, and we have about six more kids right now scheduled to come in at grade two. We would be 25 seats short. Grade three, we have the ability to be able to bring students in under that model, which is the elimination of virtual Wednesday and B group coming on, half of B group coming on an A day and half the A group coming on a B day for grade three. We can do that. We're short seats in grade four, and we're short seats in grade five. Now, one of the things that's become, I've become aware of in the last several days as I've fielded emails and responded to emails of our concerned parents is, parents may have a perception of space that may not be accurate in all buildings. So for example, if you walk through Red Mill or you go through Green Meadow and you're an active parent, you may know that there's seven students in a class on any given day, A or B day. Our plans and our numbers to try to accomplish this project and move those students up to 14 or 15 in some of the classes. But it may not be the case in every single building at that grade level that there's only seven kids in a class. And it is not the case that we are able to put as many kids in, in each of those classrooms at that respective grade level across the district to make it equitable. So for example, we have situations where, yes, we could fit a grade, more kids in a grade in one building. We can't necessarily do that in all of the building. So is it equitable to increase in-person learning for the third graders, for example, at Red Mill, but be unable to do that at Belltop? We want to have consistency across the grade level. So that's a challenge for our district because not every classroom has the number of kids that a particular section may have in a building and may not have the space available to do it. So as we are looking at all of these issues, it's my recommendation that we start with looking at the kindergarten and that we work with our kindergarten teachers to see what we can accomplish to increase in-person learning. And hopefully, we can develop something that the board could take a look at, potential implement by the second marking period or a little bit into the second marking period by November. I think it's November 16th, is it not? Was the date we talked about? We are also going to continue to evaluate virtual Wednesdays. Now, I have heard of some experiences of children on virtual Wednesdays that have become very difficult for the kids and very difficult for the parents. I visit the childcare at GCC, at Janay, and at Satanaries. I've been to each of those programs three times since the school opened. I was there again today. And I see some students being very successful, and I saw many students in Google meets with their teachers, ranging from music class to phys ed class to other situations where I saw teachers utilizing the new document cameras and doing a math lesson, and the kids were right there with them, filling out. I saw other spaces where the Wi-Fi wasn't working all that great, and there were connectivity kids, and kids weren't able to connect to their PE class, for example. So there's a range of things happening. And when we know those things, we try to address them, and Mr. Goodwin is helping me with the Wi-Fi issue. So we're taking steps as we consider evaluating whether we eliminate virtual Wednesday to look at the individual experiences of the kids and try to adjust to their needs and to provide more support. Additionally, I've talked to Mr. McHugh and the principals about needing to look at the experiences of the kids on their remote days. Okay? There might be a range of things going on because we do hear from parents that say, my child's doing great in the remote program when they're on their A day or their B day. We hear from other children whose parents are indicating that they're struggling with it. There are things that our teachers could do, there are things that our principals could do, and there are things that our central administration could do to try to adjust those situations and make them better if we have a complete understanding of what's going on. So there may be some surveying and some other assessment being done, including some observations and things of what's happening with our, not with our lights, but with our remote experiences of our kids, where we can make it better as we evaluate these options. The bottom line with all of this is we want to do what we can within the resources, which is primarily space, to help the kids where we can. I think there is a presumption that we can do it all and that we can provide kindergarten through fifth grade with in-person learning five days a week. Right now, under the New York State Department of Health guidelines and under the space and capacity of our district elementary schools, we are not going to be able to do that. The only thing that would enable us to be able to do that, K through five, would be if the standards for the New York State Department of Health changed. And I'm not advocating that they could change. However, we've done the analysis based on the real count of kids in our classrooms right now, based on the number of desks that we can fit in there. We've taken furniture out. We've shifted spaces to make music rooms, for example, special ed rooms. We've done a lot of different things to try to make this work. And we are trying to make it work in the best interest of everybody. But the expectation that we can make kindergarten through fifth grade right now at this point in the, in the year, five days a week, we won't be able to meet that. And I just want to be honest and upfront about it. And that concludes my report.
So this is the, excuse me, this is the board forum part. Is there any questions, the superintendent regarding the material that was presented, comments, questions? I can start in our virtual attendees. John, do you have any questions for, for comments for? Okay, thumbs up from John. Michelle, anything? No, which is good. Jennifer? You're good. Okay, thank you. Frank, any comments at all? You're good. Joanne? She's good. Kathleen? You're good. Deanna? And Mark? Questions? I think Mr. Simons presented very well the issues and challenges, understanding that we have heard the concerns, looked at the options, continue to look at the options, and feel that we can, you know, this board will look at the recommendation of the superintendent, understanding the concerns that have been expressed. And I think based on the due diligence and the hard work that is being presented, we look at the total picture. And I think moving in the right direction in terms of providing those more in-person learning opportunities for our, our younger learners. So we appreciate all the work, and we know it's going to continue. Again, like he said, the health and safety of our faculty, our staff, our students and our families has to be at the forefront when we consider all these things. The demands on school district, as I think I mentioned before in previous board meetings, are tremendous in terms of keeping our kids safe. And that's important to us. I do want to also say thank you for the tour. We had a tour again of Green Meadow. You may notice that we are here at one of our elementary schools. We visited Red Mill last week. We're at Green Meadow today, and it looks wonderful. I appreciate all the hard work that's gone into upgrading our infrastructure. Again, the community's support for all that will take our, our buildings and our classrooms into the future with the technology needs, the infrastructure needs, and then as we can do with the project next year in phase three, improving our classroom environments for our students. So with that, we will then move to our discussion items. Give Mr. Simons a break.
I need to interrupt for one. I know, I know people get tired of hearing my voice, and I appreciate it. I have something really important to do that I want to do right now. This is Board Member Appreciation Week. And I would be remiss if I did not extend my thanks and appreciation for our East Green Bush Central School District board members who volunteer to serve the community as advocates for education. And board members are, again, I emphasize volunteers, and they participate in more than just two meetings a month. They participate in discussions with the administration. They serve on multiple committees, and they really are advocates for the children, but for everybody within the educational community. And there is a token of our appreciation for our board members, several, some small gifts to recognize you and appreciate what you do for the East Green Bush School District. I personally feel very blessed to have this board of education. I work for you, and you are always looking at everyone's interests. You're always looking at the overall educational quality of our district, but you are also pushing us forward all the time, trying to make sure that we are as, as progressive and innovative and safe as we can be as a school district. So personally, for me, I appreciate everything that the board members here do and all those board members that are participating remotely with the school district. And I want to thank Linda Wager and my secretary, Stephanie, for arranging the small gift of appreciation for the board.
As well as our district clerk.
And Jean Pangren. I'm sorry. Jean, Jean was part of that too. So I apologize for overlooking you, Jean. But thanks to the board members. You do a great job.
Thanks, Mr. Simons. We appreciate that. I know it's, many of our board members here are longstanding board members who have given selfishly of their time, and we appreciate our families and for allowing us to, to do this really excellent work on behalf of our district because we know it's important for the district, for our community, and our families believe in its important work for us, and they support us on these late nights and all the other work that we do. us on these late nights and all the other work that we do in terms of helping the district. And I want to say too, it's an honor to serve the district. You know, I've lived here my whole life, and I feel and appreciate all the work that goes into building a strong community, a strong school community as well. And I think I've said it many times before that I'm very proud of this district and proud of this community. And, you know, we take to heart the things that you're going through, and we understand it because we're going through those as well. So, okay. We will now move to our discussion items. We have two discussion items tonight. We have a cash flow analysis, so we will turn that over to Ms. Wager.
Thank you, Mr. Buno. I provided the Board tonight an updated cash flow analysis with actual cash receipts and dispersments for the month of September, so through September 30th. I want to emphasize that a cash flow statement is simply that, it's cash coming in and going out during the month. It has nothing to do with fund balance, it has nothing to do with accrual basis or modified accrual basis accounting, it's simply cash in and cash out. So, during the month of September, some of the receipts I just wanted to notice is that our taxes, our tax collection takes place during the month of September and October. I projected, as you might remember, that we would receive $10 million in tax collection. And to my delight, we received over $21 million this month in the month of September. So I did adjust the projected amount for October. Another item that I wanted to point out is that we did receive our lottery aid as we expected. As you might recall, I indicated that that classification of aid, we did not expect to be reduced by 20%, and it was not. You will notice that in blue, there is an item of Bosse's aid. The blue items on the cash flow statement indicate items that are state aid that are reduced by 20%. So these items in here, in blue, are reduced by 20%. There are actual items that have already been reduced, and we have received 20% less. And the projected items are taking our revenue estimates from the budget and reducing them by 20% and indicating the months that they're usually paid in. There is a category there that indicates other revenue, that I classified all of the other revenue together. Those are Medicare subsidy payments that we receive from the government as well as some payments that were made by parents online for student fees, such as AP exams. As far as the dispersments go for the month, you will note that the payroll is significantly higher in the month of September, and that's because all of our staff was returned to school. And we also had three payrolls during the month of September, two full payrolls and a half payroll for our teachers. We had a small debt service payment that was interest on one of our bonds associated with our capital projects, and we have our regular health insurance and service support. The service support is higher than was originally projected. We had a lot of bills come in in the month of September for items that we received, and those things were paid. One final thing I would like to note is that at the very end, I talk about the projected restricted cash at June 30th. I adjusted that from the last report, and I adjusted it down by $900,000 to account for the $900,000 that was part of our budget that we are taking from our ERS reserve. And then I actually put in the actual amount that was calculated for our EBLR reserve, which is our employee benefits and liability reserve. So that's where we stand right now. As I said to Mr. Simons when we reviewed this, our district is very fortunate in that we are, we have gone into this pandemic strong financially. We are also not as heavily dependent on state aid as some of our surrounding school districts. That being said, approximately 25% of our budget, our estimated revenues, is state aid. So that 20% will affect us. So I'm being cautiously optimistic, and I am hoping that, you know, there is talk about in January, possibly something happening where future state aid payments will not be cut, but I think it's best to be on the conservative side right now. Are there any questions on that?
Any questions for me? I see a lot of no's. All right. And I think it's important for the community to understand, like we said before, that we're committed to transparency. We want to make sure they understand that the impact of any potential aid cuts could have on the district, and we just want to be prepared to share that information on a regular basis. So we appreciate the report, Linda, to keep us in mind what we could potentially face as a district on the long term, which has been something that we've always strived for, is long-term financial planning for the district. And there's a lot of districts out there that are going to be in a difficult position over the course of this year, and we don't want to be one of them. Moving on to the next presentation and discussion item would be the Strategic Plan Scorecard. So the business of the district does continue. We are in the midst of the pandemic, and even all things consuming are related to COVID, it seems like, and health and safety and instruction. This district has prided itself in the last few years on presenting to the community a scorecard, and the board goals are very important to us, which we took a hard look at as a Board with the superintendent and the admin team here. And Mr. Simons is going to review those today.
So as Mr. Buno said, a few years ago, the Board and the administration, through our retreats, decided that we needed a system to track progress towards the Board of Education's goals, and also to ensure that the Board's priorities, the vision of the Board, is reflected in the day-to-day work of the leadership team of the district, putting central office and principals, but also in the instructional work and other work going on among our non-instructional employees. So, the scorecard is really a tool that looks at primary objectives and strategies and timelines and success ratings for making sure that we are on track with what the Board wants to see in terms of progress in the district. Last year, we accomplished a lot prior to COVID, and we accomplished a lot during COVID. And I want to give the members of my central office team a chance first to highlight some priority projects that they were in charge of that we accomplished last year and explain what they were and how they were impacting the district and results. And then I will spend some time talking about a few that I was directly involved in. We'll go with Marissa Cannon first, who is our Director of Human Resources. You may borrow my microphone.
I'd like to touch upon Board Goal Number Two, Objective B, Continue Revision and Maintenance of Effective Job Descriptions. This is an ongoing project, one that we look at year to year, and it's important to review job descriptions as positions become vacated, either with a resignation or retirement, because job descriptions really set the expectation and the relationship of that new employee, and it sets a foundation for performance evaluations. So it's important that we review these to ensure that the responsibilities in that job description accurately reflect the present-day duties of that job. So we set candidate up for success when they're reviewing that and making sure they feel comfortable coming onboard with those job descriptions and expectations. So one of our revisions this year was in our payroll office. We had an employee serving in our district for 40 years under the title of Principal Account Clerk. And that Principal Account Clerk was responsible for a lot of our insurances. They're also responsible for attendance portion for staff. So in collaboration with our payroll office, we looked to see what the original job description had in place and what were the present-day responsibilities of that role. And so we ultimately changed that title to Insurance Technician. And we worked in collaboration with the Rensselaer County Civil Service Commission to get that approved on their end. And then we also worked in collaboration with our SRP unit to establish the new position and also establish a pay scale. One of the other positions that we reviewed this past year was our Assistant Superintendent for School Business and Finance retired after 20 years. And we took that time to look at, where do we want to redesign this position, and what is it going to look like moving forward? And we had decided to classify that position under Civil Service as a Director of Business and Finance, which is now Ms. Linda Wager. And we were able to appropriately set job responsibilities, realign them with current day practices and responsibilities, and also set an appropriate minimum qualification. The other objective I like to talk about is, under Board Goal Two, Objective C, Developing Collaborative Partnerships with Local Colleges. This past year, in 2019-20, we welcomed 53 student teachers and interns into our school district and provided them with real-world professional opportunities to help set their foundation in a career of education. We had a number of students in a variety of content areas specializing in math, social studies, English, science, technology, elementary, special education, speech, school social work, school psychology, music, guidance, PE, physical therapy, and occupational therapy. So I think we almost hit on every one. We also had the pleasure of pairing over 30 nursing students to observe our school nurses throughout the year. Those students came from SUNY Albany, SUNY Plattsburgh, St. Rose, the Sage Colleges, SUNY Oneonta, Maria College, Nazareth, SUNY Oswego, Siena, and Clarkson at the Capital Region. So I would like to thank all of those colleges for partnering with us in 2019-20. It's not only a benefit for our district, but it's a benefit for our community and for our students because in these partnerships, we all learn and we're all growing. Additionally, I was able to attend the mock interview day at Clarkson at the Capital Region Campus in February of 2020. And even with COVID, some of our colleges got very creative, and they developed a virtual education expo which occurred in April. Lastly, on Board Goal Two, Objective D, Developing a Comprehensive Plan for Improved Human Resources Management. One of my goals was to review the recruitment practices for our part-time teaching assistants. We have a challenging time filling some of these roles. The roles are either a 3.5-hour position in the morning or a 3.5-hour position in the afternoon, and sometimes a lot of individuals are looking for the full 6.5-hour day. So this year, we filled eight part-time teaching assistant vacancies and eight full-time for a total of 16. And one of the ways that we've begun to attract more candidates, even though it is still a challenge, is helping some of our candidates who don't have that teaching assistant certification required by education law, providing them with the tools in order to get the certification. So we created this year a step-by-step guidance document on how to obtain your Level One Teaching Assistant Certification. It is a challenging process, but as long as my department is able to walk through a candidate on how to achieve their ultimate goal, which is becoming a certified teaching assistant, we are seeing the process become a little bit easier for individuals. So a lot of it's just, you know, where do we start and where do we begin? And we can provide them with the tools to success on that. Does anyone have any questions?
Good job, thank you. I want to thank Marissa for all that she's done and accomplished as the Director of Human Resources. She did a great job, many things in addition to the objectives that you highlighted. Next, we'll go with Mr. McHugh, who is our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction.
The highlights from the strategic plan that I'd like to talk about are all under Board Goal Number One, Achieving Academic Excellence Through Reflection, Innovation, and Opportunity. The first item, A, which is a very important item, is under the Every Student Succeeds Act, ESSA, Keep All Seven Schools or Schools in Good Standing. All seven schools remain in good standing. Just want to note that Red Mill Elementary School and Columbia High School were also recognized by the New York State Education Department as recognition schools. Those are schools with high academic achievement, strong progress, that also perform acceptably well for all subgroups for which they're accountable. That's about 13% of New York State public schools. So congratulations to the staff and faculty at all seven of our schools, but it's a nice recognition for both Red Mill and Columbia High School. It is the second consecutive year for Columbia High School. That data, just so folks really understand, is that principals receive their building specific data, and they look for those areas that are identified as a Level One indicator needing improvement. They perform building needs assessment, and that also includes root causes. So why is it a Level One indicator, you know, digging a little bit deeper into it? Full administrative teams engaged in ongoing data meetings throughout the year last year. Those reports are important because that's really where we put our resource allocation, right? So we're looking at the areas that we need improvement, and then that's where we're making sure that our resources are spent wisely and purposeful. Our Level One indicators, just so folks know, center around student growth for some of our subgroups, for students with disabilities, economically disadvantaged students. And the other one that we're really watching closely is chronic absenteeism. Again, students with disabilities, economically disadvantaged. So you can see how some of those results go hand in hand. So when students are chronically absent from school, you see the student achievement also take that hit. Two things I really want to point out that are important is, in the previous year, Goff Middle School had a Level One indicator for chronic absenteeism, ELA in math academic progress. And this past year, they had no Level One indicator. So that's a phenomenal job by the Goff Middle School. Janay Elementary School, another one, just for an example, they had a Level One indicator for student growth for economically disadvantaged, students and students with disabilities. And those Level One indicators were also successfully addressed and removed the following year. The second highlight is under E, Board Goal One, Continue to Support Curriculum Updates Based on Data-Driven Decision-Making Program Reviews. And those program reviews have a very important role. Currently, we have a program review underway in Science, Special Education, and Related Services in English. Those updates from each of those subcommittees are shared out at our monthly CCS meetings. And our summer curriculum writing really is completed based on a needs assessment that's part of those program reviews. We'll talk about some of the curriculum writing that was completed last summer, but it also drives our textbook purchases, K-5 consumables recently for both social studies and next-generation science standards. Just some of those things that came out of program reviews are some of our new courses. Our Computer Science Class for college credit, Introduction to Video Game Development, which was an amazing endeavor at our high school, and really came out of a student exit survey of things that they were interested in. Introduction to Literature for college credit, Introduction to Psychology for college credit, Advanced Studio Art for college credit, Career and Financial Management for college credit. Curriculum-equivalent math topics are some of the new courses that are currently running. We also had Introduction to Analysis of Public Policy, and that would go along with participation in government. That was supposed to be run this year for college credit. However, the required training that was supposed to take place this summer was canceled because of COVID. We are running it as an honors section this year. There's three classes running, and hopefully next year we'll be able to run that course for college credit. I also want to point out that the teacher that teaches that class voluntarily goes for five days of training at Syracuse University to be able to run that class. So it's another great example. Lot of technology that has been, you know, integrated into our instruction on a daily basis. And just another highlight is that in our business department, we currently have three New York State Program of Study approvals. So that's quite an undertaking by our CTE business department, but we have New York State-approved programs in accounting and finance, computer applications for business, and business administration. The last highlight, under Board Goal One, again, under G, Continue to Work to Revise and Update the K- and update the K-5 report cards. There is a new standards-based report card in kindergarten in grade one. We piloted it last year at Janay Elementary School. This year, it's fully rolled out. Marie Chico, one of our teachers at Janay Elementary School, volunteered to provide training to all of our K-1 teachers today because that report card now is through Power School. So it's automatically generated through Power School. And we are in progress and making some good gains with our grades two and three report card that currently ended once we went remote last year. And we are ready to engage in that work again, but we have some other things that our teachers are focusing on right now. And once we get our feet under us and those folks are ready to pick that work back up again, we will complete those report cards. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Questions? Were there any questions? Again, thank you for the tremendous work. I think a couple of comments, you know, the K-5 report card standards basis is a tremendous undertaking. I think that demonstrates really that the focus of the learning and can show to our parents really the curriculum aligned with the standards and the progress that they're making, they can really make informed decisions around how their child is doing and get support. And also just recognizing the schools, once again, as you mentioned, all schools are in good standing, and then the recognition schools. And I would like to recognize no elementary in Red Mill. That's the same staff. You know, it's the folks that are doing it on the front lines who are taking care of your kids in the past and are still going to take care of your kids during the hybrid plan. So just want to keep that in mind. So thank you for that report. Who's next?
Well, Linda was not in her role at the time we developed this. She has carried forward the responsibilities on many of these initiatives. So Linda, you have some information you'd like to share this time?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Simons. I would like to review Board Goal Number Two, some of the objectives. Board Goal Number Two says, effectively deliver educational, human, and fiscal resources to enhance student achievement and to ensure sustainability and future growth of the school community. The first objective I'd like to review is Objective 2E, and that is to align the long-range financial plan with the current educational goals of the school district. In May of 2019, the board received a presentation summarizing the long-range plan, which basically came about as a compliance document, which resulted out of Comptroller's Offices audits. They were citing school districts for not having a long-range plan. So a long-range plan was put together by Mr. Edson, reviewed with the board in May of 2019. And as I was reviewing that presentation for tonight's summary, one of the slides that was included in there talked about factors that may affect the long-range plan and change the projections. Some of those items included enrollment growth, changes to state aid, grant funding, budget line changes, and state mandates. One of the things that was missing from that that we never expected was the word pandemic. So due to COVID, we needed to take a close look at how does the pandemic affect our school district? I wanted to mention that when we closed back in March, we made a concerted effort to start purchasing supplies and equipment that we needed because we knew there'd be a shortage on some supplies. We spent approximately $100,000 between March and June on PPE supplies, including disinfecting supplies, masks, face shields, gloves, and gowns. And this current year, we have found the need to shift our manner of spending in order to prepare for the reopening of school and the continuance of school. To date, the district has spent approximately $450,000 on PPE equipment and supplies. Plus, we have projected an additional $810,000 in salaries and benefits for hiring extra TAs, teachers, and a COVID coordinator. And we have spent a lot of money on preparing students and teachers for the reopening in the hybrid plan. We have spent significant resources on technology, including providing Chrome tabs to K-1 and Grade 2. We have provided KJET hotspots to allow for better internet access. And we have also purchased document cameras and web cameras to assist with instruction. For these reasons, the board and the district determined that we would maintain a higher-than-usual undesignated fund balance and carry that forward. We typically, by state statute, carry forward 4% of our unappropriated fund balance, and that is 4% of the subsequent year's budget. So we take this current year's budget of $99 million, and we can carry forward 4% of that as undesignated fund balance. This year, we will be carrying forward approximately 6%. And the board will receive audited financial statements for the year ended June 30th, 20 in November. And we will also have a new treasurer starting at that time. You will be receiving updated revenue and budget reports monthly, and we will continue to monitor our cash flow as we are doing. I will provide the fund balance projection for the board in January of 2021, and we'll continue to look at this long-range plan and what adjustments we may need to make. We may also need to make changes to our upcoming budget process and voting process. So we need to keep that in mind as well. The next objective that I'd like to review is Board Goal 2G, which is to utilize our consultants' population estimates and enrollment projections for the community to inform the district's long-range plan. The district has contracted with the Capital District Regional Planning Commission, and I've already been in contact with our planner to make sure we're on track, to receive a timely report, which is usually in January. There is a slight delay right now in information that they are receiving from the Department of Health, which naturally is due to COVID. They're very busy. However, they do expect our report to still be on time in January. And the last objective is Board Goal Number 2L, and that is to ensure completion of the new budget and expense reporting by building as New York State and ESSA requires. The transparency report, as you may remember, we reviewed back in July. That is a process of taking the current year, 2020-2021 budget, and allocating it by building to a per-student allocation that was submitted back in July and reported to the board. In December and January, we will be doing the ESSA reporting, which is the process of allocating our actual expenditures from last year, 2019-20, and allocating them on the same basis by building and by student. And I'll report to the board in January on that. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Linda? Thank you, Linda, for stepping in.
I want to thank Linda for her report. Linda, having only been appointed just prior to this year as Director of Business and Finance, is doing an outstanding job in her role.
Thank you.
And I will say to the board, because we don't have a full-time treasurer right now, she's really doing two jobs at once and still doing a great job at it. So I want to appreciate that.
Thank you.
She's done an excellent job.
Thank you, Linda.
Our treasurer has not started yet. So we're getting some BOSI services help where we can, but Linda is really focusing on a lot of things right now.
Very good. I think, again, it highlights the first objective that you talked about around the long-range financial planning and some of the costs, tremendous costs involved with having to reopen in terms of the PPE, the training for staff, the technology needs, and making sure, again, that our district has the resources that can provide that and make sure that this hybrid plan works successfully and we protect our staff and our faculty and our kids. So thank you again. Mr. Simons?
So I have a couple of important initiatives that really grew out of conversations that the board has been having for the last several years. One of the points of emphasis that our board has made, well, really since I came here, was not every student wants to go to college. And there are jobs available for kids that may require some level of technical training, but there are pathways to very good, well-paying careers that may not involve going to a four-year college. And are we, as a district, providing those pathways for our students and exposing them to opportunities? So the board really has had a view that we should make sure that we're taking care of all of the kids and that we have a range of different goals for kids as well as aspirations. So last year, in conversation with our board about this concern, we put an objective specifically in the plan, ensure that we are engaging students in career exploration, particularly that was located under Goal Number 1J. Jennifer Massey, who is here remotely, Jennifer, you can hear me, I hope, had some contacts that she brought to our attention that really helped us address this goal. Jennifer brought me into contact and Mr. Harkin, the high school principal, Mr. Q, with an individual named Dan Paris, who runs the New York State Apprenticeship Program for the Department of Labor. So Jennifer was kind enough to bring him to a meeting with us to talk about what we could begin to do as a district to talk with our high school kids about apprenticeships, about career pathways in the trades. And Dan Paris was an excellent resource because he got us in contact with many of the local union trade shops and leaders who were very generous of their time. They came into the district, they did presentations at the high school, as well as we organized some experiences with BOSIs through Jim Church, who is their Director of Strategic Initiatives, to bring some of our kids to those training centers, including learning about what it takes to become an electrician, a sheet metal worker, the guide rail, and steam fitters union, and really provided a great opportunity for our kids to learn about those programs. It gets even better. We connected with Martin Electric to be part of our efforts to expose kids to those trades. And we brought some kids from the high school over to a job fair that was being sponsored by Zones, which is a large technology company that also has a Microsoft 365 Help Center. And from talking with Mr. Harkin, that exposure has led to one of our kids who was in last year's senior class getting a job and is working for Zones as he is going to Hudson Valley part-time. So we had a lot of activities prior to COVID, and we're going to pick this up this year, where we were involving our kids in learning about the trades. It is a big concern across the state that a number of individuals in the trades are either close to retirement or retiring. That field, along with manufacturing, are looking for people who can fill those roles, and they're paying good money. We've also worked in situations individually for kids to take part in coursework to become welders, and some of those kids have gone on to good-paying jobs as welders. So I want to thank Jennifer for giving us that opportunity. I want to thank the board for emphasizing this critical aspect of our educational goals. I've got one other, actually two others to highlight, the advocacy committee, which was Kathleen Curtin's idea on the board. Kathleen said at one of the board meetings, and I'll paraphrase, you know, the legislators kind of get tired of listening to your superintendents. Maybe you ought to get some other voices in the room. She didn't really say it that way, but that's what she said. So we formed a committee of board members, students, staff members, both instructional, non-instructional. And we went even further. We invited other districts in our area that had similar concerns regarding state aid to join forces with us. And through a lot of conversations, we were able to put together an advocacy forum at Columbia High School, which was very successful, involving our district, Gilderlin, New Lebanon, Skodak, South Calani, Burn Hills, Boston Lake, Scotia Glenville, Voorisville, Avro Park, Bethlehem, and Teconic Hills. And we had three student representatives on the committee. In fact, one student who has now graduated, Jason Romanowski, served as the moderator. It was very well attended by both the community, representatives of all of the districts, as well as our legislators. And while we were advocating at the time for ensuring that we would no longer receive the minimal state aid increases that we received, we certainly didn't anticipate that COVID would take us in a backwards direction. However, I still think the advocacy forum had a benefit because it gave the legislators a different perspective. The focus had tended to be on just the high-needs districts, which they do have significant needs because they're more reliant on state aid. But the impact of minimal state aid increases on our districts, who are average wealth, and how it encroaches on our ability to be able to continue to provide programs without overburdening the taxpayers is a message, I think, they left with from our forum. So Kathleen, thank you for your idea and for helping us put that together. And also Karen Curran, who was our former board member, was also part of that process. We got one more. And this is under Goal Number One, Item. It's right before Item J. I'm not sure that we put a letter on it. The board was aware that last year, we were invited by Questar BOSIs to participate in initiative with other districts called Students First. It was a professional development experience that involved every single member of our, every single one of our principals and our central office team attending sessions with Wyman Skill School District at Questar facilitated by the former Bethlehem Superintendent to take a look at how we could become more focused on data and how data could be utilized better within our district to make instructional decisions. So Les Loomis took us through a process beginning in August through November where we were asked as an administrative team to really look closely at some data sets and develop some objectives for improvements. The process also involved teachers looking at data at the classroom level in terms of how their students were doing on various standards-based assessments. We targeted a 10% decrease in chronic absenteeism. And so when I talked earlier about the importance of monitoring the socio-emotional needs of our middle school and our high school kids and connecting to school, absenteeism is a measure that we have to take a look at. We want kids to be in school. Chronic absenteeism is defined by state and national standards as missing 10% or more of the days of instruction. So in a typical school calendar, if you miss 17 or 18 days, that's considered to be chronically absent. Decreasing our course failures, we looked at the number of students, particularly in the middle school and high school, who were failing two or more courses and how we could improve in that area. A 5% increase in the percentage of kids that were proficient on state tests and Regents exams, our performance there is already high. So the 5% made sense in terms of a benchmark we could increase to. And the level of mastery, meaning students meeting the cut points on Regents exam and state test, who have considered to be not only proficient, but mastering the content. And we had discussions of putting in place in our schools something called AAA data meetings, where we really ask our teachers to meet in teams with our administrators to take a really close look at data through a structured process. I think our participation in Students First, while it was shortened because of COVID, was very beneficial. Not only the time that we spent at the BOSIs, but the time we spent within our administrative teams, talking together and collaborating around student achievement. And we hope to continue that process this year and maybe even as we work on our scorecard and our strategic plan for the coming year, have some of our objectives be a little more targeted in terms of percentages in data. We did a lot of work on student achievement last year and also in areas to connect the kids to other career paths and career fields, and we're going to continue that work this year.
Excellent. Are there any comments from board members as we wrap up the discussion on the 1920-20 strategic plan?
Actually, I have a comment, Mike.
Yes.
I should have said it earlier when Mr. McHugh was speaking. When he talked about the career pathways that we now have for our business and finance, in my time at the board, we cut all those programs for financial reasons. And so bringing them back to the level that we are now is really a huge accomplishment. And thank you, because I know there's a lot of kids that that is a pathway that will enable them to get their degree or get their diploma. So thank you very much. It's definitely been appreciated.
Anyone else? So I think we had some previous, John?
Just a quick comment.
Just a quick comment. First of all, I would like to thank the team for putting the work to keep us up to date with the scorecard, with all the other things that you have going. The scorecard is very useful in reminding us, you know, what our positions are as we go through the year, because it's hard, there's so much going on in a school, to keep focused. So it has a real value on a lot of levels. And I would also encourage the public, if anybody's listening, to actually sit down and read the scorecard, because that will really help frame the direction that we're trying to move in, in these difficult times. Because I think one of the things that happens with the folks is they get fixated on a singular issue, and it just needs a kind of a overall reminder that there's a lot of different things that make up the direction of a school district. So thank you for the effort, and it was a great review.
Thank you, John. So Jeff and I were talking a little bit during our agenda review that development of the 2020-2021 scorecard, letting his team take a look at the results, develop some ideas around goals and objectives. I think the goals that we worked on last year are still very valid right now. And I think considering the circumstances, we can make some adjustments in our objectives. And one of the things I know we talked about too was understanding what's happening with our students with the current hybrid plan, the remote instruction, live instruction, in-person instruction, and where there may be gaps in learning and how we can address those across throughout the school year to support our students who may have had some challenges with this. As well as those students who are very strong academically and are having a different learning experience themselves, and they may also need support. So more to come on the development of those. If there's no other comments, I want to move to committee reports, and we'll start with Marissa. She needs a microphone.
Last week, we had reported on the elementary school student attendance data. So this week, I want to take a moment to discuss these attendance data at Goff Middle School and Columbia High School. The data used to develop the attendance reports regarding student absences is provided through Power School, which is the district's student information system. At Goff Middle School, we had 76 absences on A-Day, and I should backtrack for a moment. This is for the same time period we discussed last week, so it's from September 14th through October 2nd. So 76 A-Day absences, 55 B-Day absences, 76 virtual Wednesday absences, and 133 remote absences. So I know Jill Barker is at the meeting virtually tonight, so I would like to turn this over to Jill at this time, so she can discuss the implementation of attendance procedures and interventions that Goff Middle School has put in place.
Good evening. Thank you, Marissa. We are continuing to evaluate the validity of our absenteeism. When we first started to figure out how to take attendance for our remote students, we initially started with if the student on a remote day submitted an assignment, we would mark them as present for the day. And then the teacher would go back into their attendance and they would correct their attendance. This became a very cumbersome and tedious activity for a teacher to do, and we found that there wasn't a lot of accuracy in that. So based on that scenario, we came up with a Google attendance form, which we have now put into every student's Google Classroom, so that they get, and they get a reminder every day to say, if you're on your remote day, please click yes, I am in attendance. And that way, we could capture students that are participating on a remote day in school. The problem with that is they're middle school kids, they're 11, 12, 10, 11, 12, 13 years old, and they don't always do that. So we have, as of this week, we started to call down students when they would come in in person. If they didn't do their attendance on a remote day, we called 130 students down this week and talked to them about the importance of making sure that they fill out the attendance form, so we could have accurate attendance. Jude Schufell has been instrumental in trying to look back at attendance to see if a student didn't fill in the attendance form, did they actually participate in classes throughout the day, so that we could say, okay, the student was actually in attendance but didn't fill out the form. So we are looking at a number of different ways to make sure we can capture accurate attendance. But it is tricky, and we're continuing to evaluate our process and analyze it so that we can make sure that we are capturing a correct attendance for students who are participating, but also capturing students who aren't attending. So every week, we have an instructional support team meeting, and we review the attendance of all of our students. We've done over 25 home visits to students who aren't participating on a consistent basis when they're, these are our full remote students, or even if they're not participating on their remote days, we are actually visiting their homes and talking to them to find out, is this an internet issue? Is this a lack of understanding of how to engage in the, through the computer and to Google Classroom? And we're finding that we're learning a lot as we do these home visits, that many parents were unclear about what they signed up for when they said they were going to do remote. We found out there were some internet issues. We found out that they just had a lack of understanding about what the schedule looked like and how they should participate in our model. So we're continuing to gather more data and review our process to make sure our attendance is the best that it can be. But overall, we have a 94% attendance rate, and we obviously want to improve that, but we're going to continue to, teachers are reminding kids each and every day, make sure you do your attendance. Teachers are doing very diligent about, student joins late, we do our first period attendance as our daily attendance. And if a student shows up late and they're five minutes late, we make sure that the teachers go back and mark them present. So there's a lot of components and logistics to having accurate attendance, and it's just not very straightforward, and we're just continuing to work through the process, and we're improving it each week as we learn more about what are some of the obstacles to having the best accuracy in terms of attendance. But we will monitor it closely, and we're continuing to review our process.
Thank you, Joe. Turning to Columbia High School, for A-Days, we had 99 absences, and in our CTAP program, we had 12 absences. On B-Days at Columbia High School, 105 absences, and for the CTAP program, 26 absences. Virtual Wednesday at Columbia, we had 157 absences, and CTAP, 13 absences. And then lastly, our remote absences at Columbia were 143, and at CTAP, there were nine. And as Mr. Simons had indicated before, Columbia High School administration is working to locate about nine students who may have left the district but not yet sent in a transfer request. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Mike Harkin to talk a little bit about the implementation of the attendance procedures at Columbia High School.
Thank you, Marissa. Much like Jill, we are still working to make sure that we are taking accurate attendance. It has proved to be challenging with our remote students, and it's difficult for the teachers. We're asking a lot of our teachers to take attendance to kids in front of them, kids remotely. Some kids come on a few minutes late, they may forget to go back and do it. So we're all working together, and the staff has been great and cooperative with that. We are noticing through our attendance committee, which meets each week, which is the counselors, my administrative team, and the social workers, that we do have an issue on virtual Wednesdays. For whatever reason, some kids are just taking Wednesdays off. So we've been having our social workers make home visits. Much like Jill, we're probably about 30 or 40 home visits so far this year, and we're still working, like Marissa said, on nine students who we believe have left the district or left the district but have not enrolled in a school. So those nine absences are adding up, and that's why part of our numbers are high. But for the most part, we feel like we're getting a good accurate representation of what's going on, where we've been improving our numbers, and we've been engaging more and more students. So I really want to thank my social workers, my administrative team that works each day to do that, and we hope to improve that and engage all of our students. That's obviously always our goal, so thank you for this time.
Thank you, Mike. Does anyone have any questions about the student attendance at Goff or the high school?
No questions. I think it's just important, and I want to thank the efforts of the middle school and the high school to make sure procedures are clear, work through some of the obstacles, like you said, and then to get our students to be present, I think, because that's so important at that age, to be present, to be learning, and we know how if they're missing any of that time, it could set them back. And it's interesting about the remote absences, you know, kids are fully remote and still not present, so interesting. We'll see how this evolves over the course of the next reports. Thank you, Marissa.
Next, I'd like to briefly report on our vacancies for instructional. We currently have two full-time teaching assistant, anticipated vacancies at Belltop. We have two very seasoned teaching assistants that we are sad to see retire right before Thanksgiving, that they are moving on with the next chapter of their life. We have nine candidates for those two positions, and Mr. Mahar is working on building an interview committee for next week. Additionally, we have a part-time teaching assistant at Belltop, a part-time teaching assistant position at Goff, and a five-hour teaching assistant position at Columbia. And those part-time TA roles will be posted tomorrow on our district website and on OLS. We have still a challenge finding classroom coverage for our teachers that are on approved medical leave and are working from home. And so we're working to make sure we have the coverage. We have substitutes in those roles right now, but myself and Mr. Newman at Goff are going to be interviewing 15 candidates next Monday, so we can go ahead and get the rest of those positions filled in a more permanent manner. For our non-instructional positions, we have bus aide resignation. That posting is closing later this week. And we also have a food service position at Belltop, closing on October 28th, and a typist position at Belltop due to retirement, also closing on the 28th. So we will be working on getting those filled. And then lastly, our Appendix D Committee met earlier this week on Monday, was the first meeting of the school year. In attendance was Drew Romanowski, Allison Hosher, Joanne Taylor, Jim McHugh, and myself. And what we did was we reviewed the language in the memorandum of agreement with the EGTA regarding Appendix D compensation. And we started off our meeting looking at what are the deliverables and what are those timelines? So one of the items that we're working on is creating a new matrix for determining the level of compensation to be provided for co-curricular activity advisement and realigning that compensation schedule to something that is a little bit more relevant to what those clubs are doing today. Additionally, we are tasked with creating an evaluation tool and also an application in an interview process. So this is going to be something what we will be continuing to look at throughout this calendar year, and we have created a meeting schedule for the future. We're going to be meeting again on October 29th, November 9th, November 19th, December 3rd, December 9th, December 15th, and December 21st, to ensure that we're able to meet all of the timelines needed for the successful arrangement of Appendix D moving forward. We had a lot of good ideas during the meeting. We are going to be starting off with the evaluation tool and the application and interview process as a starting platform, and then we will be getting into the development of the new matrix. And I don't know if Ms. Taylor or Mr. McHugh want to add anything?
I still have a minute if you have anything else to add. Well, I want to thank the committee for allowing the board to do that. It is a lot to process.
Thank you.
Sitting in that meeting, you really don't realize all the intricacies of that position, the positions and the salaries. And I'm looking forward to the remainder of the meetings, and I think we've got a lot of work to do, but I think it's all headed in the right direction.
Thank you.
Give a minute. No comments. Thank you, Joanne. And then I echo what Joanne said, I appreciate the EGTA for working with the district and having a board member present, because it has been an area that we've talked about quite a bit, and I think this will help the board in terms of its information flow and education about how this process works. Thank you, Joanne, for participating. And I think John Dunn said he would be your backup, just in case. Right, John? Thumbs up, thanks. All right. Moving to Mr. McHugh.
Just a committee report for Committee for Curriculum Study. We met October 7th, 2020. It was through Google Meet. I do want to note that even though it was in Google Meet, we still had 41 participants. So that's pretty good. October is always a great meeting because it's when all the summer curriculum writing is presented to CCS. Some of those highlights was that there was a development of a Common Midterm for Living Environment in Physics. That's needed because that midterm grade is 5% of the final grade. We want to make sure that there's equity and that our students, regardless of teacher, they're taking that same midterm that's counted as 5% of the grade. Another highlight, Global History, that was really a needed project to ensure that students are ready for the new Common Core exam. If you look at the foundations of the project, just a couple of them, really integrating the enduring issues and having those discussions, those meaningful discussions about challenges and problems that society is faced with, things that are being debated and discussed. And also, if you look at number four, creating digital lessons through EdPuzzle, I just want to note that folks are taking advantage of the platforms that our technology department has rolled out. EdPuzzle really allows for interactive video lessons, it allows for teachers to filter the context, so if they're using YouTube, things like that, they're able to edit. They also can embed their own questions within the video using that. So it's great to see that the technology that's being purchased and secured is being utilized, you're seeing that in a lot of the curriculum writing. Some other highlights, there's a lot of work in sixth, grade six through eight, English Language Arts. Sixth grade incorporated a new novel, so all sixth graders are reading that book, Fish in a Tree. And really, it touches upon diversity, there's a lot of diversity amongst the characters embedded in that novel, and it really focuses on empathy, and we know that that is something that's really needed. Some of the other things you see that folks are talking about, what they have realized in the middle school is that comprehension is so tied to vocabulary. So there's an increased focus on vocabulary, making sure that we're enhancing student vocabulary, which will improve that student comprehension. If you look on our Next Generation Science Standards, there's a lot of work. Columbia High School continued to do some work, really transitioning to Next Generation Science Standards, making the units of instruction more reflective of Next Gen. Goff Middle School did Next Generation Science Standard for grade eight. What's really neat about that is if you look at that, all of our eighth-grade science teachers were involved with, we had a high school science teacher that was also involved because of that transition year. We had a math teacher and a special education teacher. So when you look at the collaboration, the professional collaboration on some of those projects, and Mrs. Taylor was there as well, folks were pretty excited to present that. They felt like that was one of the more worthwhile initiatives that they engaged in. Again, K through five, we continue to do some curriculum writing, and in K through five, we have two to three consistent units of instruction that are reflective of Next Generation Science Standards per grade level. So that's great. It's accessible through our K-5 Curriculum Corner. And then the same thing with our Social Studies, that program review came out, and over the last three years, we've done some summer curriculum writing work. So K through five has a consistent unit. In 2018, they did a consistent unit for geography, K through five. 2019, culture, and then last summer, economics. We are hopeful to tackle government and civics in the summer of 2021. So that's it. Any questions regarding any of that? But if you look through the work, it's pretty impressive. The other thing I will say is what's really important is the way we archive it, Google Classroom, Google Drive has really been helpful. A lot of times, this work has taken place, and it sits on a shelf somewhere. And this is really important, that the way we're rolling it out, that it's accessible to our teachers. We've made sure that it's part of our onboarding, where we have new hires, that they're aware that this work exists, and it's made a lot easier through Google Classroom. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. No questions for Jim? No? Simmons?
I just have one item, and it's an important item. I want to thank the teachers for the recent, and the principals for the recent open house. Open House had to take a different format this year, combination of virtual meetings as well as recorded presentations at different levels for the Combination of virtual meetings as well as recorded presentations at different levels for the families. I myself was able to participate after the fact because I wasn't able to get on for the high school open house until this morning. And I did participate in viewing the presentations of the teachers as a parent. And I was very impressed. I was impressed by the organization of the accessibility of the content for the course, the goals for the course. Anyone can go on there now. So, for example, if you're a parent and you're listening to this and you haven't, you weren't able to do the open house at the high school level, you can go on right now on our website and you can watch your teachers present. There's a grid that you open up and you can go to, for example, if you have first period, English 10, you can click on English 10 and you can watch a video of the English teacher explaining what the course objectives are, how the course is organized within Google, how the kids know about the assignments, how the, every single one of the teachers talked about office hours. I was very, very impressed by having that accessible to the parents. And I want to thank the teachers for the work involved in it. There were some that were really just easy to access and well-done and well-delivered.
Thank you. That concludes our committee reports. And we will now move to the minutes of the October 14th. Any corrections or revisions to the minutes? And I had Jennifer, you were not present. So, seeing no comments, revisions, I need a motion to approve those. Frank, second. Kathleen, all those in favor? All those abstaining? Jennifer, approved. Approval of programs for residential disabilities? Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I need a motion to approve that. Joanne, I need a second. Deanna, all those in favor? Approved. Moving on to second reading of policies, Mr. Simons?
Yes, this is the second reading of the policy that was reviewed by the Policy Committee. It's a change in the acceptable use agreement for student use of our technology network and our computers. It involves the inclusion of a statement that was agreed to by the teachers and the administration that prohibits unapproved recording of lessons. This does not apply to teachers recording their lessons. There's lots of teachers recording their lessons and posting them in their Google Classroom, which is a good practice for kids to go back and review. And it does not preclude a parent or a student from asking permission to record a lesson in the event that that request comes forward to the teacher. So, it's really to protect the appropriate use of the technology as we are conducting a lot of Google Meets.
Great. So, there were no comments or questions, revisions on that? And if not, I need a motion to approve that. Frank, Michelle, all those in favor? Approved. Moving on to table motions, I have none at this time. Old business, I just have one comment. Based on our timeline of the superintendent's evaluation, Mr. Simons did submit his self-evaluation. Thank you for that. Lots of good information there. We are going to do a session, myself, Deanna, Frank, hopefully, to go over super eval. We do have, so it is open, it's ready for a review. And I just encourage everyone to pop in there and start working on their evaluation. We do have planned for November 4th. I figured around 6 o'clock to 7:30. Virtual for everybody? Does that work for folks? None? Yes, virtual? I think so? So, I'll do that. And I'll send some information about just timeline and I'll put together a Google Meet or Zoom for that. Any other old business, board members? No? Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda, any questions or comments on the consent agenda? Mr. Mann?
Yes. Okay. The question from Mr. Mann was regarding the request from National Grid for aneasement. There is some underground cabling and replacement and new cabling that needs to be put in by National Grid on this property, Green Meadow. I believe it's on this side of the property. I'm not 100% sure of that, Dan, but I believe it's over on this side. Okay? And we received that request from National Grid and we had Colleen Heinrich review it. I don't know exactly the timeline of the work. I don't think we've been informed of the timeline work, have we yet? But it'll be digging into the ground and laying some cable.
Yeah, that work won't be completed until the springtime.
Until the spring.
No.
It permits them to command the property. It protects them and it protects us.
Any other questions on the consent agenda? I know Marissa mentioned some retirements, I think, were coming up. So, congratulations to our future retirees. I always like to mention in our gifts, thank you again to Hannaford for some support for our elementary schools. And lastly, I think there was the grant repressed for technology. Ms. Barker, I leave you involved with that. So, we thank you for the, pursuing the grant. And the $20,000 will go towards the purchase of additional Chromebooks for the middle school. So, thank you for taking that on and getting that grant for the school district. Seeing no other questions or comments, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, items A through L. Kathleen, I need a second. Jennifer, all those in favor? Approved. Moving on to new business, anyone, board members? Mr. Simons, any new business?
No new business.
Okay. So, we're now moving to our public forum. Linda, is there any emails?
Yes, there is. We have two emails.
Two emails, okay.
The first is from Tyse Bailey Yovanit. She is disappointed that I allowed a political, what she interpreted to be a political statement, to be read during open forum tonight, that she interpreted as being for asking questions. And she's concerned that it spread misinformation, indicating that the K-5 parents are looking for babysitters, when that is not the case. Most K-5 parents, especially K-2, are looking for an equitable education that was continually emphasized at the beginning of the school year. East Green Bush Elementary students are not receiving an equitable education this year compared to the high schoolers and other school districts that looked out for all of their students. You keep bringing up the middle and high schoolers that can read and operate a computer themselves, needing to receive an equitable education. Those students have the ability to read and use a computer themselves and K-2 students do not. Could you please explain how the current plan is equitable to K-2 students that can't read or operate a computer themselves?
I think we can take that email. Mr. Simons, you can think about the information and content. I don't think we can just answer that directly at the board meeting. Is that acceptable?
I think I'd like to take the contact information. We have been having a lot of discussions about reading at the K-2 level. And I'd like to talk to the principals a little bit more so I can respond in detail to that concern because I know one of the concerns is not only working independently on the computer, but the reading aspect of it. So, I will respond to it, but I want to take a little bit more time to have enough details regarding the reading experiences that the kids should be having through the computer and have a complete answer for her.
All right. Another one, you say?
Thank you. One more email is from Brianna Miller. And I have responded to her in writing. She would like to know each of the board members' names and how each of the board members are selected and are the members paid. I responded to her by referring her to the section of our website, Board of Education, meet the board with your names, your pictures, and your bios, and that the board is serving as volunteers.
Okay. And is this a community member or is this a parent?
This is I believe a parent.
Okay, so they have, any information is on the website. We all run for elections every year. But in our terms, we are unpaid and we are grateful to serve our community. Anything else?
Let me just check.
Okay.
Yep, that's it.
Okay. So, that concludes our second public forum. And then I'll just turn it over to the board members for comments. We'll start with Mr. Mann. I'm going to grab the mic. Is that one working? That's good. Thanks, Mark.
So, we get a lot of information from NISBA, New York State School Boards Association. And I don't know if anybody read the information that they released around 6 o'clock tonight. About roughly in New York State, there's about 7,000 schools. And out of that 7,000 schools, 62%, almost 63% are doing a hybrid model. 20% are doing in-person and 17% are doing fully remote. So, our district is in line with a lot of the school districts. 62% of the school districts in New York State. But one of the things that their state ed is going to be asking school districts is, you know, they want us to look at and conduct a survey on how many of our kids, you know, don't have a device at home or don't have available internet. We've already done that. We've already done that. We've issued them. We've, forgive me the term, Linda, that you used, hotspots or whatever we bought, that, you know, we're giving families to use that are having internet issues. So, East Green Bush Central School District is ahead of the game. And we're in line with what the state is asking us to do. We're in line with the majority of the school districts in New York State. I just want to thank you and your team and Jim for all the information and how you looked at everything. I've given Mike a few suggestions of some things that may help that he's going to pass on to you. But, you know, thank you for everything that you do and how you continue to look and address the concerns of the parents. So, I know you get inundated with emails. Then you do your best to answer them all. Yes, we missed one, but that's because the power went out. So, but thank you for that. Thank you for getting back to folks. You know, I encourage people to ask questions. And, you know, we provide, we're very transparent with all of what we are doing. So, thank you for that.
Thank you, Mark. And I think just to echo what Mark said, you know, a lot of times, if parents will connect with their teacher, connect with their principal, and the resources that are available through their elementary school, middle school, or high school, they can get a lot of the answers that they need and the support that they're looking for for their children at school. So, thanks, Mark. Deanna? Kathleen?
I just want to mention on the consent agenda tonight, we also had three tenure appointments for three of our teaching assistants. They work very, very hard. And I really want to congratulate Anne Howe, Courtney Mahar, and Sean Wayman for achieving their tenure.
Thanks, Kathleen. Very good recognition. Joanne? Nothing? Frank, do you have anything? You're good. Jennifer Massey? I need the microphone, guys.
Sorry, I was muted. So, I just want to, administrative team for all the hard work and dedication and also keeping us up to date on the scorecard because there are other things that are happening and great things that are happening within the district. I would also like to say that the situation that we're all in, the district and all the districts across the country, it is a very difficult and challenging time. There is no one perfect solution. As we are think, as we're navigating and learning through this process, all of us together, there's no one perfect solution that is going to fit every single person's needs. And that we are trying to work very diligently together to navigate all the ongoing changes as well as providing the best level of service that we can in very unprecedented and difficult times. And I want to thank all of the families in the community, all of our partners in the community for pulling together as best we can. I do encourage people to reach out, ask the questions, make the suggestions and the recommendations. And we will continue to partner together to look at those for consideration and attempt to make the best decisions to keep everyone in the district safe and continue to hopefully remain with our schools open for the school year as best we can. So, again, I just want to thank everyone, the community, administration, for all the diligence and support. We will get through this, but it's going to take us getting through it together. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Michelle? Good? John?
Just a brief comment. Again, we covered a lot of ground this evening. And I think we're reaching a point where we keep spending a lot of time and resources and studying how we can try to implement certain things. We're all suffering COVID fatigue right now. And I think as a community, we have to come together to serve the interests of the whole. And there's two ways that we're doing this. One is as individual families have problems, as Jennifer just stated, being available for them to try to help them individually as they move through this with strategies and resources. But the overall thing is, as we review what we're doing with, we'll use the hybrid model as the example, we have to at some point say, how can we make the hybrid model better? How can we serve the people we're missing in this model? We're asking our staff to do a lot of things that are outside the norm. Our administrative team is putting a huge amount of hours trying to come up with solutions. And I think at some point, we have to recognize that there is no simple solution. But we can take our energy and our money and put it into making what we are currently doing better. And I think you're starting to do that. And I think with your report tonight, it recognizes that. And I just encourage the community to try to work with their individual schools and teachers to get the services they need as we all have lost a little bit of something through this. And just be mindful of that when we're frustrated. We're very mindful of that when we read the emails of frustration and we appreciate their position. So, again, thanks and let's get back to work. The oars in the water, we still have some rough seas ahead. So, thank you for the time and this opportunity to speak to everyone.
And Mike, can I just add in a comment too? Sorry, I was on mute. It's really a challenging time and I couldn't echo everybody else who talked earlier. It's really important that we try to stick together as a community. I don't think any of us know what the right answer is, but we know that we have to be mindful of the safety. The worst possibility is to be out completely remote again for the remaining part of the year. So, we have to really keep that in mind and keep our safety protocols critical. But honestly, it's heartbreaking that we can't have school. And everybody on this, on the school board and sitting in this room and sitting through the school district feel the same way. We don't want this. We want the kids to be in school five days a week. And I just can't believe this is where we are now. But nobody has the right answer or the, you know, the answer that's going to satisfy everybody. So, try to work with us as much as we can and please keep open communication. We really welcome the suggestions. They're looked at and thought of. We appreciate all the emails. And just please understand that I think everybody is trying to do their best. And I also want to, you know, give praise to all the people in the school district, the administration, the teachers, the staff. I mean, this is all new grounds to them too. And they're doing an amazing job keeping our students safe. And they're doing an amazing job keeping our students safe and the faculty safe, the people in the building safe. And we have to make sure that that is recognized and that we try to, again, come together as a community to try to do the best we can for this year.
Thank you, Michelle. Great comments from everybody. Any concluding comments, Mr. Simons at all?
No, I appreciate everybody's understanding of the complexity of what we're challenged by this year. Again, we'll continue to look at everything in terms of the feedback we get from parents. We're going to, we, we're going to continue to look for solutions within the model that we have. The discussions that we need to have with our teachers that I referred to earlier will continue to occur. And we'll continue to look at this. There is, there is always opportunity to make what we're doing better, as Mr. Dunn said.
Great. That concludes our board meeting tonight. We do not have need for an executive session tonight. So everyone has a, not a long night ahead of us. So I appreciate the time, a lot of information tonight. With that, I need a motion to adjourn. Kathleen, second. Joanne, all those in favor? Approved. Have a great night. Thank you for everyone.